All right, that's our cue to start our meeting tonight. We want to welcome those in the audience. We appreciate your participation and your interest in coming to our city council tonight. Welcome to staff and welcome to council. We appreciate your service here tonight, too. We are going to excuse council member Weiss. He is out of town tonight. And we are going to have a pledge of allegiance and an opening ceremony by council member Christensen.
Can you pledge allegiance with me?
I.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful this day that we can be here together as city council and people from Harrisville. We're grateful that they could come and visit with us and be able to help us do the things that we need to do this night as we present and do the different things we need to follow. We're grateful for this opportunity to serve, to be able to serve our community. And we're thankful for it. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ to men.
Amen. Thank you, Blair. Okay, moving on to item number three, our consent items. Item A, approve the minutes of March 8th, 2022, is presented. Has council had an opportunity to review those, look over them? Any changes, any discussion on those? If not, a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March 8th as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So a motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item B. Sometimes we get to do really fun things on here, and one of these things is tonight. And we have a representative from Rocky Mountain Foundation for a presentation. Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself and tell us why you're here? Because I'm pretty excited.
My name is Kirk Nyger. I'm with Rocky Mountain Power, and I'm representing the Rocky Mountain Power Foundation. I think last year my grant was submitted for officer mental health training. And we saw that the grant, our board supported that grant. And I'm here to present to the city a check for $3,000 from the Rocky Mountain Power Foundation. We are excited that we can be partners with our community. Rocky Mountain Power, we have many communities. One of the things I did late last year was visit most of the cities. And we were in Davis County and said, hey, we have an endowment fund with Rocky Mountain Power Foundation. And we need our communities to take advantage of that fund so that we can contribute to your communities through Mayor Tate's guidance. They took advantage of that, and that's why this is here. Your mayor, your community, your leaders care about your community. You're willing to reach out to us so that we can help support you. And we thank you for your service. And anytime that we can help first responders do their jobs better, that's a win for every community, for every one of us. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we need a photo opportunity with that check.
Oh, how do I hide?
I sure like sitting over here on the side.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have to give kudos to Cynthia Benson. She's our assistant or our deputy city recorder, and I gave her the assignment. We have these opportunities. She looked into what we could do. There were some various things, guidelines that she had to fit this within, and she did that. And thank you, Cynthia, for your hard work on doing this. So again, thank you. We have, I'm just going to elaborate on this just a little bit. We are one of only two cities, Ogden and Harrisville, that have created or been a part of this officer mental health. What is it? It's just a. Wellness program. It's a wellness program. They are located within Ogden, and they reached out to Ogden City and asked if they could be a part of their police department because there's a lot of stress in the police department. Our chief heard about that and wanted to be involved in it, came to us as staff and said, can we be a part of this, too? Well, we decided that there's a lot of, this was during COVID, there's a lot of stress going around everywhere. So we included everyone in staff on that, and we're able to provide that. And there's various things that they can do. They take a survey, and the survey evaluates, you know, you have to be truthful on your end, evaluates your mental state and what we can do. And it has identified some needs within our own staffing, and we've been able to take care of those. And it improves the morale, it improves the safety and wellness of everyone here. So we have found it to be a great benefit. And then when we found this, we'd just go hand in hand with their grant. Now we can just continue forward with this. And I'm very pleased with one of these things. This is, this was a good, good news moment, right? Yeah. Okay, moving on, we're going to go on to our business items now. First of all, on item A, we have a public hearing. And this is Harrisville City. Council will take the comments for or against the Harrisville ordinance 534, which is stormwater and sanitary sewer impact fee enactment. As always with a public hearing, I need a motion to open it up.
I motion that we open up a public hearing for Harrisville ordinance 534, stormwater and sanitary sewer impact fee enactment.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. I need a roll call vote for this. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Willumpson?
Yes.
All right. Before we take comments from the public, I would like to have, is it Justin that you want to take to this, or is it Jenny?
Either.
All right, well, I'm going to call on one of you.
I have a short PowerPoint. I can present it now, or I can.
Why don't you go ahead and do that? And then we'll know what we're talking about, right?
Okay. So it looks like our city engineer, Matt Robertson, just joined us on our Zoom meeting as well. So if there's additional questions, feel free to present them, and we can get them answered. So as you're all aware, we have been in the process since October of 2020 by providing the noticing for the intent to prepare the, a new impact fee facilities plan and an impact fee analysis to make adjustments. When we initially start this process, we don't ever know how that's going to affect the impact fee. It could reduce it, it could increase it. But we go through the appropriate process to find out where our projects are and how the growth and development in the city is impacting our community. So the noticing requirements have been met for the stormwater impact fee. The notice of intent was given on October 14th. A public hearing and adoption of the impact fee facilities plan was, and the notice to prepare the impact fee analysis was on July 13th of 2021 for the stormwater. It was actually in February 8th of 2022 for the sewer. And the public hearing and adoption of the impact fee analysis and enacting ordinance would be this evening. The projected growth over the next 10 years for the stormwater impact fee is outlined here in anticipation of 801 new equivalent residential units for that growth. And the proposed projects that have been outlined, again, this is just a brief overview of the projects that are included in that analysis. And you can, we can go into any detail you'd like during your discussion points on any of those projects. And then there's a summary of impact fee costs that is done by the analysis. Then the allowed amount, the consultant costs, and a deficiency credit, excuse me. The impact fee fund balance is accounted for in the deficiency credit. So it's not listed on the impact fee fund balance, but it's incorporated into the credit that is given for a cost per ERU of $2,432.36 for the stormwater. And this rate is impacted over the course of five years. So this is an outline of what that rate would be over the course of the next five years. State law recommends that we do these analysis and assessments on our impact fees every five years. And the store, the sanitary sewer is similar. We did our notice of intent October 14th. Our public hearing and adoption of the IFFP was in February. And the public hearing of the, and the adoption of the impact fee analysis and enacting would be this evening. So the proposed projects and the effect of the new growth over the next 10 years for the sanitary sewer is 608 ERUs with the proposed projects outlined here for the new developments and growth within our city. The summary of impact fee costs for the sewer is broken out similarly, and the total cost per ERU is $1,711.18 per sewer connection or ERU. And the, the rate would increase by this amount over the course of the next five years for a maximum of the 173189 in 2026. So that's just a general overview of what the analysis includes.
Thank you, Jenny. Justin, do you want to add anything to that? I'm sorry, I didn't see your name on here, Jenny. No. Matt, is there anything you want to include with this?
I'm trying to.
Matt is on here, but is he? Okay. So with that, we'll leave, the public hearing is open. We will allow anyone in the audience that wants to come and have a comment. You have three minutes for your comments on this matter, the stormwater and the sanitary sewer impact fee. So you're welcome to go ahead and, if you have anything for this. Please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Mason. First of all, I'm new to all of this. I have questions, and my questions are based upon going through this documentation and some of the terminology I need clarification on. When looking up the meaning of your ERUs, that term can be utilized either residential, meaning single-family or multifamily homes. So I guess my question is, the 800 increase over the next 10 years, is this a combination of single-family dwellings or multiple-family dwellings such as apartments? My question.
All right, thank you.
My question is, is, is it sanitary sewer? And what's the other one?
Sanitary and stormwater.
So if some of the streets that don't have sanitary sewer and stormwater, are we going to get charged for the sanitary sewer and stormwater? That's all.
Marvin Farrell. I live on 750 West. I, excuse me, I tried to read through, well, I did read through it and tried to, I should say. And there's a lot of information in there in the study that you do have. I agree, one of the, some of the terminology maybe we don't understand in the ERUs and what that may be. Excuse me. There's a lot of development that is going on, a lot of development in the past few years that Harrisville has increased a lot. What I understand if, and you correct me, and this is a question in a way, is on this study, it looks like the impact fees will be towards the developers. So as, as the developers come in, are these impact fees, and that's the way I read it, is they're going to be passed on to the developer as well. But are these impact fees going to be passed on to the residents of Harrisville? There's already been fee increases, water, water fees that have been increased with the cost of living that we have. I just, just before I came here, the cost of living is at 8%. Food, food has went up 10%, and gasoline is at 48%. And if we keep doing this and we pass this on to the residents of Harrisville, I don't know how we're going to do it or how they're going to do it. So I think a question, if we could try to figure something out to help with these impact fees, and I know that the growth of Harrisville is coming, it's here, there's the developments that we have, but the storm drains are having to be increased. It's going to impact me, for one, as far as the storm drains. I've addressed that in several of these meetings. And it doesn't seem that it's being looked at. We're just going to dump it downstream, and, and there you go. We'll put a bigger pipe in to handle it. That's not the answer. The sewer as well is coming from the developments, and if this could be somehow passed on to the developers. But do we have another way, or could we, you know, think outside the box a little bit? Is one of my thoughts are, we need the manufacturing, we need, need businesses in here to make Harrisville go. And so that comes with development. And so if we could think of a way to help offset these costs so that the residents don't have to take those on. Thank you. So if that's, if that's the case, I would oppose it as far as the residents go in this. Thanks.
Are there any other comments? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing for the ordinance 534, stormwater and sanitary sewer impact.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call again. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Willumpson?
Yes.
Thank you. Jenny, are you available to answer those questions?
Yeah, I think I can answer both concerns that were brought up. To be clear, impact fees are assessed for new development only and are paid at the building permit time. So when building permits are taken out, it's paid during that process and only assessed to new developments. Justin, do you want to elaborate?
Yeah, so like Jenny said, it's only on a new home build. It's not existing residents don't pay impact fees. It doesn't go back to them. As, as the 801 units, that's a guesstimate. That's kind of our best idea over the next five years that we're possibly going to have 800 new ERUs. ERUs also contribute to commercial and commercial development. They're, they're at a different rate. They'll still pay that same price per ERU, but their ERUs are by the square footage and the amount of, especially if we like sewer, the amount of restrooms that are in those buildings, all different sorts of aspects. And that's done through a calculation that we do on our building permit. So this has no direct impact on, on residents that are already in our community. But what it does have impact on a lot of these residents is you can see the outlines of the projects that then we're able to take that money that the new residents, when they pull their building permit, we can then go and help other areas of the city to make the city better, to build up our infrastructure for existing residents and the new residents coming in.
Thank you, Justin. I think that covers, sorry, all right. I think that we answered the questions. The developer pays impact fees, not on the residents. You've got your explanation for the ERUs, and everyone will be that. So those were the things that are addressed in the.
So does that clarify the one question as far as if there's no storm sewer or do those residents? It really just involves new development, right?
New development.
Now, one of the questions that Mr. Mason asked is, we're doing that per unit? Where he was asking the question of multiple families or multiple family dwellings, is that still per unit? Just so I have a clarification.
Yes, so that is also based upon when it's a multifamily unit. It is also based upon that calculation through our building permit process of square footage, amount of restrooms, amount of impact. So if it's a three or four-story apartment complex, their ERUs will be higher. It won't be just one single ERU. It will be multiple ERUs. So they will have to pay a higher impact fee.
So it's per unit?
Yes.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to pause right here for a second. Those on Zoom cannot hear us if they've missed out on 20 minutes. A really good stuff. So we'll see if, you know, technology's wonderful when it works, but. We'll see if this helps. Matt, are you able to hear us now? He says no.
Getting off.
He's getting off. Um, that was.
Mm-hmm.
You winked, huh?
Yeah.
The L. I failed to detect your microphone. Oh, boy. There he goes. I actually heard that. I don't think I've heard that before. Matt, if you can hear us now, will you let me know?
Hey, I think you found me there.
Awesome. We've been talking about this stormwater and sanitary sewer impact fee analysis that you've had. You haven't heard what the questions were or what we've gone over, but would you like to add anything? You were the one that was in charge of this. Do you want to help us out here at all, or do you have, think?
Just if you have any questions for me, I'm sure it's been explained pretty well. We did the impact for the capital facility plans and the impact fee facility plans and then Zion's financial, the financial analysis for, to determine the impact fee. So I'm sure Justin and Jenny have done a good job explaining the, it's just based on the growth that we see coming in the city and the projects that are going to be needed. And then the cost for those projects that are due to growth that are development-driven is spread over the, out over the projected growth. So each new equivalent residential connection that comes in pays their share to upsize the system to provide that service for them. But yeah, if you have any questions for me, I'm sure they've done a good job. I was just going to listen in anyway, so no big deal.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate your input, too. Okay, council, have any other things to discuss or any other questions that we need to address?
Well, just in question of what Marvin had to say, I realize that this is impact beyond new, but one of the comments he made is, is build a bigger pipe and let it go down, you know, the stormwater just goes downstream. I'm not sure where you're coming from on that as far as the, how does that impact our fields? Or is it just water that continues on down through, so to speak, through the trenches and on out into the bay?
Well, I think this is why we have the experts do all these things that we need to do, or is that?
Yeah.
Because we don't have the answers, and we, we contract with it, like the engineers, and, and let them figure that out, and.
And that's fine. I thought it was a good question, Mark.
Hey. The public hearing is over. I'm sorry.
No questions?
No questions. I'm not going to entertain that right now. It is the council.
You haven't discussed of what percentage, if you adopt that, how much of a percentage over what we're paying now would be?
It's, Blaine, you're not, you're, it's not going to affect you. All right. Council, any other questions or anything? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for this. Well, okay, we'll go on to item B. Discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance 534, stormwater and sanitary sewer impact fee enactment. So a motion on this, please, if you're ready.
I motion that we adopt Harrisville ordinance 534, stormwater and sanitary sewer impact fee enactment.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I need a roll call on this because it is an ordinance. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Willumpson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. And if you guys have questions, I encourage you to ask, Justin. I'm volunteering you afterwards, or Jenny. I want you to make sure that you understand what's going on, but there's just proper protocol during a meeting that I have to maintain. Okay? Item number C. This is discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance 532, which is a zoning change application received by Triple Peaks LLC from agricultural, which is an A1 zone to commercial, a CP2 zone for Weaver County parcel number 17-066-0062, located at approximately 2440 North Highway 89. That was all mouthful. Okay, Jenny.
So as was included in your packet for this evening's meeting is a staff memo outlining the application for received on February 8th from Triple Peaks LLC to rezone approximately 3.68 acres located at approximately 2440 North Highway 89. The Weaver County parcel number is listed from A1 agricultural zone to CP2 commercial zone. A public hearing was held on March 9th, 2022 to receive public comments, and the proposed ordinance comes with a positive recommendation from Planning Commission at their March 9th meeting with no conditions. The application is and concept plan complies with our Harrisville municipal code. The concept development plan includes the outlined general land use types, the building structure and facilities, open space, parking access and traffic patterns and infrastructure locations. The purpose and intent of the CPT zone states the location of the zone should be along selected locations adjacent to their arterial streets which run through Harrisville in order to provide good access with limited disturbance to residential areas of the community. This is on directly accessible from Highway 89. And the proposed concept plan is consistent with the 2019 future land use map, which I've also pulled up here. You can see its location is this parcel here. The background here is, this is where the bar, Sargent's Inn Bar, well, previously was located until it unfortunately burned down in the fall. And they were in the process of applying for a site plan amendment to modify and remodel that. During the process, the fire took place, and their new concept plan includes the, the building's location comes into this parcel, which was, is not currently zoned commercial. So that's what this zoning application is to rezone this, which, this is the future land use map, so it's consistent with that request.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions, council? It came with a positive recommendation from Planning Commission. And one of the things. And one of the things that I was, found interesting on this one when I was at Planning Commission last time is that it doesn't take up that whole parcel. It just goes over the, the parcel line. So it needed to be, because it was a separate parcel, it needed to be changed.
I'm noticing, excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm noticing that the concept plan was not in your packet.
It was not.
Let me see if I can pull it up so that you can see what the concept looks like. Let me go back in screen share so our Zoom participants can see as well. Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
So this is the concept plan where the propos, proposed building location is. You can see this is the current boundary and this is on the new.
Okay, Blair's got it, so it must have...
Oh, yeah. Oh, it is there. Okay. It just wasn't printed, so my apologies.
Well, this is better so everyone can see it this way, so thank you.
This is, no, this is a commercial business.
All right. Anything additional that we should, um, be discussing on this? If not, I think we're ready to move forward. And, uh, can I have a motion on this, please?
Second.
Motion and a second. I need a roll call on this one, please. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilhamsen?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call carries that one. Thank you. Item number D. This is, excuse me. Are we going to table this one? All right. Excuse me, we don't have enough information to, uh, go forward with this. It was on the agenda, but we're, we're going to make sure that we've got all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted before we go forward with this. So we'll table this and start the next, next time. Do I need a motion to table this?
Yes, it would be good.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to table this item?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll table that item. Item E, discussion possible action to approve surplus property, including a Big Bubba trailer. Justin?
As council approved a couple of months ago, the purchase of two new trailers. We do have a Big Bubba's trailer. It's 20 foot long, seven foot wide. It's just not able to haul the new equipment that we have. It's, it's been in service in the city for almost 15 years. And we just feel like it's probably best to, to surplus it out. I stated in the memo that, uh, the first plan of action would be to list it on KSL for seven days. If at that point it does not sell, then we will look into, um, employment, employee surplus or through auction site.
All right, so we have sufficient for our needs with the new trailers that you've gotten. We just need to surplus this one.
Yes.
Who's determining the fair market value of it?
We've reached out, I've reached out and gotten some quotes from Big Bubba's. And, and other trailers on KSL have also been able to kind of help me decide a price point at around $3,500 for the list price.
What gross weight is it currently okay to haul?
Um, right now it has 7,500 pound axles, two of them, so roughly 15,000 pounds.
What are we trying to haul on them?
A skid steer.
Weight-wise?
Oh, the skid steer's roughly 14,000 pounds. Same with the Mini-X we're looking at purchasing in the next year. And the new trailers both have 10,000 pound axles, so 20,000. So it's just, it's been a great trailer. It's serviced as well, but it's time to upgrade.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? Any more questions for Justin? Okay, a motion, please.
I motion that we approve the surplusing of our Big Bubba trailer, purchase of one with the heavier rating.
Do we need to have that in the, we don't, we've already bought the, the other ones. We just need to surplus. So just amend your motion, please.
I amend my motion to say we go ahead and surplus out our smaller Big Bubba trailer.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item five. This is the public comment section. And this is if you would like to come and address the council. This is a three-minute limit. But go ahead and approach the, the podium and give your name and your concerns. All right.
Thank you again, Marvin Farrell. I'd like to comment on item C on the Tri, Triple Peaks where, uh, this has been from agriculture back into, uh, commercial. Anyway, there was a public hearing on this and the residents that are around there, their comments were negative towards this. Yes, the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, gave you a positive on it. And I would like to say that, again, as far as commercial, I'm for that. But the, what I want you to all know is there was a problem, there is a problem that stands there with the flooding in that area. When we do get, when or if we do get some rain, uh, then there's potential that that does flood. And then it comes down almost, almost to the homes there. And that was their concerns that, uh, this needs to be taken care of. I know that Justin addressed that in the, in the hearing, or do we call it a hearing? Anyway, that we had. And, uh, I just want you to be aware of it and let's keep that in mind as you move forward, uh, with this project, uh, which I do agree with. So the other thing was is, uh, Mr. Wilhamsen, you, uh, we commented on the, uh, stormwater and I mentioned that it goes downstream and then we forget about it. What I mean by that is we have these developments. And I'm going to take the four mi, or the, uh, six mile, that the development of the Ben Lomond Golf Course over there. We're increasing the pipe over there. It's going to go under, underneath 89. But the problem is there's a smaller pipe that goes underneath the railroad tracks. So that water is going to back up. It already backs up when, when we get a flooding. Uh, my father lives right there. It backs up to the point that it floods him. There's flooding. It, it floods the field, uh, below there. Uh, Mr. Christensen, uh, is well aware of that covert that goes underneath the railroad tracks. And it is, I have to say, 150 years old. It's decaying. It's crumbling. And so that needs to be addressed. The other one is the four mile that runs down, uh, past West Harrisville Road, that I have tried to address this, uh, back into Gene Bingham time. And that same thing, the water goes underneath the railroad tracks and that covert there. The water backs up and it goes into my field, uh, when we have a high runoff. So I want you to be aware of it. I'm more than happy to help you with any of this, show you it. I have pictures of it. I've addressed this, uh, several other times. I think my three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Greg Mason, again, I have to start with the questions since I'm new to the procedure. My comment has to be based upon the topics that we've already discussed or just open forum.
I'll allow you to just, whatever you want to say.
Ooh.
But there's, there's no... Just know that there's no conversation back and forth. We're just listening to you.
Okay, I'm, my concern is water. We're looking at, um, putting in a lot of construction. We're here today as far as stormwater. And I'm, my understanding is there's something also coming up in reference to all the other construction with water as far as metering and things of this nature. All right. I'm looking at it from a stance of everything I don't know. And here's what I don't know. All the technicalities involved. But what I do know is we're running short on water. We can meter, we can charge whatever we want to for water. But if we don't have the water, I, I feel that, uh, we need more of, of a control usage as far as what's happening with, with our water. I know of people that are into farming, they're being cut down on the amount of water that they can use. Frankly, Greg Mason would rather eat than water his lawn. Okay? Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you. We'll go on. I, I like to eat, too. Going on to, uh, item number six, mayor council follow-up. Uh, just a reminder on next Tuesday, which is an unusual time for us, but we are meeting on that night, April 19th at 7:00 PM, and this will be a bond discussion. We had that, uh, last month?
We had the presentation last month and we'll have the discussion next week on that. Uh, Jessica will be prepared. Who else are we having? Just...
Staff, yes. Mostly staff.
And so we can discuss what, how we want to proceed with that. Okay?
Time's up.
Seven. Is that an open meeting?
It'll be a public meeting, but we'll be posting it as a work session. So it'll be a more casual environment for a discussion and we can talk about what our, uh, plans are as far as our current assets and what other assets we have available for us for the funding of the 750 West Municipal Project, Project and Complex. And then we can just have a more casual discussion about it and it won't be listed as an action item. It'll simply be a work session.
Another thing is a 2150 North traffic study. Do you want to, somebody help me on this one. What have we got?
So last month, a concerned resident came in, um, about the development on 2150 and the amount of traffic it was bringing and wondering if we could take them down to 2,000. Um, so as we well know, we were able to buy those boxes, the black boxes, a few months back. And so we did a side-by-side study. Um, we put one on 2,000 and then one on 2150. And Jenny's got those reports. And so, like I said, it doesn't give us the information of who it was or the license plate or a picture. It just gives us the information of the amount of vehicles. And we did it the same week at the same time. So this is on 2,000 North. And if you can look, it, it states the time, the date and time of the study. And then if you scroll down...
All the way down?
Yeah. The very end, it gives us a, a summary. So i- in that timeframe, in that weekly timeframe, on 2,000, right at 550 West, we had almost 8,000 vehicles with an average speed of 25, 25 miles an hour, 24 miles an hour. Go to the next.
I thought I had it pulled up.
It blows me away.
Sorry, Justin.
Oh, you're fine. So this is the 2150 of the March 14th to the March 18th. And again, all the cars, the times and the actual, and the speeds. We had 2,500 cars on 2150 and 550 at an average speed of 15 miles an hour. So very much so, the safer and best route for the construction is to stay on the 2150 and stay away from the excess traffic and the little bit higher speeds of 2,000. But that's, these boxes are extremely helpful, helpful in these studies to really understand, you know, what, what is really taking place.
I didn't know we had that capability. Thank you for, for doing this. And I see Mr. Yular is out there nodding his head, so is that helpful to just see that?
It is wonderful. Depends on the point in time. But those are other variables that come into play there, so.
I just want, I just want you to know that we, we followed through. Okay? Council, Grover, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, Kenny?
No.
Max? Blair?
Okay, I have, I have one more item that I forgot to put on your... So you all received an email. Uh, staff has been working on a follow-up for the concerns on Chug Lane by the residents there with the new house that was built on Chug Lane. Uh, with your permission, if everyone agrees with that letter, we'll work with the property owners to remedy that situation.
It's a one-time deal.
It's a one-time deal. Okay?
Okay, staff has the ability to do that. That's what we needed.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to address one more thing. Uh, I think on everyone's mind is water. Uh, we, we've got, you know, it's kind of weird to talk about it when we're getting in the middle of a snowstorm in April. But we, everyone's concerned about water. I am on the Bonavista Water Board. I'm actually the chairwoman out there. And I, we have been talking about this. We, uh, put together some drought restriction information last year and it expired in December. So we had met again last night to find out what we need to do. It's not put together in a resolution yet, so that's going forward and it, but the public hearing was last night. It looks like what we're going to do is just basically follow what, uh, Weaver Basin Water has done. There's a whole list of drought restrictions that we'll need to follow. There's also going to be, unfortunately, some, i- if you're a heavy water user, it will show in your water bill is what it amounts to. They can pull up your water bill. You can see how yours compares with others, which I was astounded that I thought I was doing pretty good and I'm not. So that'll be, things will be changing in my household. I, you know, we were talking about it and how someone said that they would be taking a five gallon bucket in their shower when it warms up in the morning, that's where their water is going to go in that five gallon bucket. And they'll use that to water their plants or something because we cannot use the culinary water. Weaver Basin is cutting back on culinary water. We buy so much water from Weaver Basin. We have, last couple of years, we've used 95 to 97% of that water. They are cutting us back to approximately 85% of the water that we have. And if we go over that, we'll be charged a, a fee. So that's why the fee comes in for residents that overuse because the, the district will be charged again.
Are they going to educate the users as to?
And that's, that's part of this. Uh, you can go to, yeah. And that's part of the problem is how do we educate? You know, we can talk about it here. We can have it out on websites. And it's on everyone's mind. And I'm hoping everyone will go to these things and, and see if it's on Facebook or on the websites or it will go out to their water bills. But not everyone gets a physical water bill either. So we need to, we need to be a proponent of this. We are not going to, we have found out, sorry, my mind's going this way. We have found out when looking through our own ordinances that we have a, an ordinance in our city that addresses this. We had talked about it last year, but we don't need to do that because we already have one. And it's just basically the same thing. If we don't have any water, you know, conserve. Uh, this goes on, it is, it'll be on the Weaver Basin water. But, you know, you can't, we don't want people that don't have their landscapes in to, to install those. We're, um, we are not allowing that water to be used. If you've got secondary water, you cannot use your culinary water to, to irrigate with that. And they'll be, it, it'll be the same thing as in the city. We won't have anybody from Bonavista going out and, uh, patrolling that. But if, if they find on their water bills that you can see the usage in gallons, that if it's excessive, they'll be looked at. that if it's excessive, they'll be looked at and fined if necessary, so. Um, this is just the tip of the iceberg, I I encourage you all to go and look at Weber Basins and find out what they're doing, um, because we'll be, we're all in this together. I mean, unfortunately, we can't produce water, right? Marvin?
My suggestion, would it be possible to do a public hearing of some sort to get the word out? Or or maybe even uh volunteers, if we can get the word out?
I, you know, look, we've had a public hearing tonight, you've got this many people. So we, I think we'll try and get the word out as best we can with, we'll have it out on the marquee, we'll encourage people on Facebook and our websites and everything to do the same thing. And I hope you guys will take this and encourage your neighbors to to do this, and council members, people that you do, because, yeah, we're, I don't know how this storm this week will help us, but we're in trouble. And that's, that's from the water board last night, and that was pretty scary. Okay, so we're unusual tonight in that way, I'm going to have a motion to adjourn this meeting, so someone like to give me that?
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one's opposed. Now, we are going to go on, and we are re- going to reconvene as the Four Mile Special Service District Board of Trustees. So now you are changed over from council members to trustees of this board. And we are going to call to order that meeting and and welcome you, but that is, you just shifted hats, okay? We have business items on this, we are going to open up a public hearing on this. This is a Four Mile Special Service District Board of Trustees, and they'll take comments for or against Resolution tw- twenty-two dash oh-six, which is the Warren Hollow Annexation. This is an annexation of ten point three one seven acres of property, located approximately one seventy-five east Larson Lane into the Four Mile Special Service District. Um, why don't I just have you redo this, or revisit this before we open the public hearing, okay?
Sure, I'm happy to. So I believe I have the annexation plat pulled up here. Uh, let me share for our Zoom participants. So you're aware, last week, we adopted a resolution that accepted the petition for the annexation of this development into the Four Mile Special Service District. This is actually the resolution, um... This is the public hearing, I'm sorry, to uh take public comment, and then it'll come back on a subsequent uh agenda for your approval for the actual annexation. So this is to receive public comments from, the public notices were given to all residents within five hundred feet. And we have a waiting period that we will continue to take public comments, and once that has completed, then we will adopt the resolution annexing the property into the Special Service District. Do you have any questions about that annexation process, or or the Special Service District, why this is being required, anything that we can answer for you? It's really a formality, the Lieutenant Governor's Office will certify our annexation, and then we will record at Weber County and have this development in our Four Mile Special Service District.
Cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Yes.
We thought we were doing this last year, and we did not have all those things done, so Jenny has gone back and started the process all over again, so we are doing it correct at this point. So, if you don't, go ahead.
Now, will this one have a, I'm guessing they're using just their existing water shares, like the Millen property, correct? And they'll have a pond over there like the other?
Very much so, they'll have a pond um in this corner.
Oy, yourself?
Oy, myself, because it's a little, it'll be up in this corner. Um, and they've, they've already um handed over their water share. Again, with the water restrictions and them just barely pulling building permits, that we won't have any water that we'll use this year for that property. We'll actually keep it shut off at the canal head gate, and so those water shares will be able to be used downstream at other properties.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Justin.
All right, if uh I'd like to have a, if there's no more questions, I'd like to have a motion to open a public hearing, please.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the Four Mile Special Service District?
I'll second it.
Okay, I guess I need a, I don't need a roll call on these? For the public hearings?
For the public hearing.
I did that just a few minutes ago.
It's okay, it never hurts.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no, no one's opposed, so this is another opportunity for anyone that wants to talk about this Four Mile Special Service District. You have an opportunity to come to the podium.
You get to hear from me again, Marvin Farrell. Uh, the Four Mile Water District, uh, I've asked this question before. Uh, I'm not sure if you're able to answer it now. Uh, but what would be the cost per resident for this? Um, and I see the co- I see the cost of this, uh, Four Mile, the the pumps and to to do this if it's pressurized, uh, to be in, to be very expensive to do that. And then, again, this passed on to the to the residents. Uh, and I see it as well, Pine View, uh, they're maxed out, you can't get the Pine View water. Uh, this is actually out of Pine View, but it will come out of the Western Irrigation Ditch uh to do this, along with some of the other proposed Four Mile districts in the area. And the residents that are around not just this one, but the, can I comment on that, other than this one?
We're talking about this one.
Okay. Uh, but anyway, uh, even residents that may be around this one, uh, if they could hook on to that Four Mile District and then the charges that may be there, and then they could turn in their water shares as well to do that, if that would be possible. That's the comments that I've heard, thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, if not, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion that we close the public hearing on the Four Mile Special Service District, second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. So we just now wait because we need, have a waiting period for more comments, we don't ta- take any action on this, we just wait, but that's what we needed to do tonight, okay? Okay, I'm confused now, I'm sorry.
So there's a second public hearing for the second resolution, which is the connection meter fee.
Okay, so this is the, all right, excuse me, I I got confused there for a minute, I was left on my own. It's okay. Okay, um, we now need a motion to, for item B, a public hearing. The Four Mile Special Service District Board of Trustees will take comments for and against Resolution twenty-two oh-seven, Four Mile Special Service Connection or Meter Fee. And do we want to have that discussion before we have the hearing too?
I'm happy to do that.
Please do.
So this one is, will actually address the comment that was given. Let me pull up the resolution here.
It's there.
It's got to be here, doesn't it? I know where else to find it, let me pull it up real quick.
Until she's done this more than once, can't you?
Well, I appreciate your patience, I was a little scattered, I've been on vacation, and today's my first day back, so. Uh, let's pull up the resolution for all, let me share it real quick. So this is the Four Mile Special Service District Connection and Meter Fee. In part of my um background, to make sure that we are adopting these things appropriately for the Four Mile Special Service District, uh, last year, at the time we in, we created the Four Mile Service District, we adopted some general service utility fees, but that was as the council to make it formal as the district, that's also included in this resolution. So the proposed utility fee for this service is forty dollars per unit for single-family residential, multifamily is imposed at twenty-five dollars per unit, and non-residential, a monthly utility fee is imposed of three hundred per forty thousand square feet of irrigated um landscaping. Well, actually, it's regardless of whether it's irrigated, it's based on square footage, square feet. The sec- secondary water connection meter fee is set at the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars per lot. Uh, multifamily will be seven hundred per unit, and the commercial is seven fifty per ERU. And so that may address some of the public comments that were previously given during the annexation public hearing, but these are the proposed utility fees. Again, this is a utility fee, by incorporating this i- as a special service district, there is the possibility that property taxes can be assessed in the future if we go through the truth and taxation process. But this is a monthly utility fee only to be paid by those residents that are in the Special Service District. To be clear, this is not across the board for the entire city. The only people paying these fees are those that are in the Special Service District. As part of, another thing that Justin can maybe go into further detail if you have additional questions, all of these developments are being required to implement these processes, the the pressurized secondary water systems as part of their development. So we're looking at future maintenance of these and uh just running the systems with our current employees, or as it grows, uh, additional employees if that's necessary. But this isn't to create the systems, this is to maintain them once they've already been put in as part of that development.
I was at a meeting the other day where Mountain View Water Connection Fee was discussed, it's eight thousand dollars. So to see that at seven hundred and fifty, I I I'm really impressed that that's what we are.
And this assessment, um, Justin, do you want to give a little detail on what, where you got that number?
So why we've came up with this number over Mountain View, um, Mountain View, part of theirs, they've gone through the impact analysis and and they've put that into their um connection fee also, so that's why it's a little elevated. Ours, because of the way we're setting up and the developer is paying for the entirety of the system and then handing it over to us, um, roughly, they're about a, with with the pump house that, the pump stations that we were asking, and the piping and all that, they're roughly about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar system, or more depending on the size. Um, the two that we're currently looking at having right now are about two hundred and fifty thousand. As of right now, um, we'd originally agreed with the developer that they would buy the meters. What has happened is we're, we do our utility billing through Bonavista Water. They're in the process of changing out their metering system to a a tower read system that reads twice a day. We don't know which system they're going with yet, but we want to piggyback with them that our system can read off the same towers at the same times. That way, those residents that do have these meters, we can build correctly and directly the same way Bonavista does with their culinary water. So for right now, we will have a master meter in the system that will tell us how much water these residents are using. We will just have a monthly, a flat rate monthly cost until we get individual meters, and that will cover the seven hundred, the seven hundred and fifty will cover the cost of the meter and the time and maintenance for the Public Works employees to go install and put these meters in for these homes when they're ready to go.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, now we need to open a public hearing for this then.
Motion to open the public hearing for the Four Mile Special Service District for Connection and Meter Fee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now motion carries. All right, have you ever been to a meeting with more public hearings? We've got a lot tonight, so you know the routine, you're welcome to come up here to the podium if you have any thing to say about this tonight. And I think we probably got everyone's answers, their questions answered, it sounds like. If not, can we close that public hearing, please?
I'm making the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, no one's opposed, motion carries on that one also. So, I move to item D?
Yes.
Okay, I've got it now, I'm back on track. So item D is a discussion, possible action to adopt Resolution twenty-two oh-seven, which is what the hearing we just discussed, the Four Mile Special Service Connection Meter Fee. And if you have no more questions or anything to discuss, I'd encourage a motion on this, please.
I motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash zero seven, Four Mile Special Service Connection Meter Fee.
All right, got a motion and a second. I do need a roll call on this one, please, and I make sure I do it in the right order. Uh, Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Willamson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay. Uh, item number three on this agenda is board staff follow-up. Anything to add to this?
I guess I'm a little confused, on the last open hearing.
We skipped, we skipped.
C.
We skipped C because that one needs to wait for the.
Okay, that's all I need now, you said now we're going to wait.
That's why, that's why I was confused too, so, okay, we're both back on track here?
I'm on board.
Okay. My apologies, I didn't make that more clear. All right, and if you don't have anything more to add to this meeting, um, I'd like a a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor on that?
Aye.
Ah, awesome, thank you, a lot of work tonight, thank you so much, staff, you've been great, thank you for attending.
So I'm just curious as, as how the city is going to work with the impact.